Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is additions and or deletions to the agenda. Is there anybody who would like to change the agenda from that proposed? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented. Motion from?
Jim?
Eric. Support from Ann. Called a question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, motion carried. Next is the review and approval of the minutes from the January 30th meeting. Are there any comments on those minutes? Brian?
No.
Ann?
Oh.
Jim?
No.
Eric?
Looks good.
Entertain a motion, please, to approve the minutes as presented.
May I move to approve the minutes of January 30?
Have a motion to approve as presented. Second from Eric. Called a question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Again, Lori, as usual, good job. Move to the next item, which is public comment. Anybody wishing to speak to the commission about an item not on the agenda? Seeing no hands, I'll move to the first item of business. Sketch plan review for a home occupation request. The applicant is Island Winery LLC, 8400 Concord on Groceal. And the applicant's name is Nick Boder. The location legally is lot 244 Potawatomi Woods subdivision. The common description is 8400 Concord. Concord, in case you don't know, runs Paildell Church. It's about a box south of Church. 8400 is about midway between the intersections of HCL Jackson and Canterbury with Concord. It's on the north side of the street. The proposal was to start an in-home business to blend specialty wines. The general process for wine making was provided by the applicant, and it includes, first, purchasing concentrated juices of various types, which are then blended. And then the blended juices are fermented in a six-gallon can. Then there's a wait time while the fermentation takes place. They then transfer it to a secondary container for additional fermenting, and they wait again. And then there's a hand bottling operation and labeling, which then produces the finished bottle product. There were a number of things that were told to us about this application. There's no signs involved in this. There's no building modifications for the house. There's no employees. There's no volunteers involved. It's entirely the activity of the people who reside in the house. As far as deliveries are concerned, and pickups and this sort of thing, it's all by the personal vehicle of the homeowner. Now, for this type of activity, since the goal is to sell this, the state requires a liquor license. And so that, in fact, is part of the overall review process, not of this commission, but down the road with the township board. So that's a background on this. The zoning for this house, it's in an R1B, single-family residential district. The relevant ordinance for this are Article 3, which is single-family residential, and specifically Section 3.3B, which reflects that home occupations are in allowable use, okay? As long as that all the provisions in Article 19 are met. And so Article 19 is the second ordinance that we're looking at here, and Section 19.15 entitled "Home Occupations" has the standards under which the community reviews and approves and considers these types of applications. So, as far as the process is concerned, it's a multi-step process. The planning commission will review it and tentatively approve it based on compliance with Article 19, potentially. This then goes to the township board, because only the township board can authorize and validate that a state liquor license can be sought. So this will go to the township board, but not for the zoning end of it. It's going for the liquor license portion of it. So as far as zoning and the home occupation is concerned, from a zoning perspective, the planning commission is the final decision-maker. And I would expect we'll vote on this tonight. Brian, I've kind of summarized this. Could you give your short presentation on your write-up, and then we'll hear from the applicant?
I'm going to approach the podium, Mr. Chairman. It's okay. My mic's working.
Oh, please, come on up.
I'm probably going to get comfortable up here tonight.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and wonderful summary. There's not one thing on my opening page here that you didn't already cover, so I'm just going to kind of go through the highlights here. I do think it is worthwhile to at least throw up the quick aerial photo, so you can see sort of the sights and surroundings. This is the applicant's residence with the giant orange arrow pointing on it, if everybody can see that. You can see, it's literally just, it's a home, just like any other. And I don't mean that in a bad way to the applicant. No disrespect meant. It's in the middle of a residential neighborhood. As you've noted, it is zoned R1B. Single-family dwellings are the predominant land use in that category and in this particular neighborhood. We've already talked a little bit about the location. You've already covered the ordinance provisions. 3.3 does permit home occupations, provided, again, that the section, or the regulations of the general provisions, 19.15, are complied with. The process that dictates the planning commission input comes through Article 21, which notes that such uses require a sketch plan review before the planning commission, such that we bring these forward to you. We've had a couple, really, only the last several years. These don't come up very often, but they do on occasion, and that's why we're here this evening. And then maybe a little bit more detail. I've kind of summarized the eight points, the eight standards of Section 19.15. You know, again, this is just sort of paraphrasing the ordinance language, but the proposed home occupation must remain clearly incidental to the principal use of the building. That is, it must clearly be accessory. We don't want to have a situation where a home is converting to more -- I'll talk with my hands, I got to watch the mic -- more of a commercial use as opposed to the resident. It has to remain a residence first and foremost, and a small component may be authorized as a home occupation. There are no allowability for storage or display of goods outside of the residence. Further down the list, there's a prohibition on signs. There cannot be anything essentially that changes the look of this home from any others in its neighborhood, whether it's by signage, whether it's by some equipment, or materials, or things that need to be displayed. None of that is allowed under your home occupation ordinance. Appearance is another one. We can't have appurtenances attached to the home that are outside of the normal residential character. Nothing that would attract it or promote it as something other than a house. Ultimately, the idea is, you should drive down the street, and you should never have any idea that there may or may not be a home occupation inside. That's the ultimate goal. If one is approved, it should look no different than any other home in the neighborhood. The others, really, that wouldn't be visible, internal alterations, large mechanical operations, large pieces of equipment are specifically prohibited. Again, maintaining the nature and the proper balance of principal to accessory in that particular situation. Already talked about signs being prohibited. And then the last one is, really, that it can't have any nuisance-like impacts on the neighborhood. Noises, vibrations, smoke, fumes, any of those things that could cause external harm or impair neighboring properties are all expressly prohibited. So this is just a quick summary from my review letter. The applicant's going to come up and speak to you in a little more detail about the process itself, the timelines that are involved, the equipment that's involved, and sort of the quantities of products that they would like to keep on hand if this is approved. But I'm just going to hit real quickly on my points. We've already noted, this use, if to be allowed, requires planning commission review and approval. You are the last step in terms of the zoning review. That is, you're not making a recommendation this evening. You are the final decision-maker. John's already mentioned, you know, the use itself is described as sort of hand mixing, bottling, and storing of blended wine product. The equipment, which they're going to show you this evening, is really, it's really just plastic jugs, buckets, and then bottles. That's pretty much what it's limited to. I actually asked them to bring this stuff specifically, because when I first heard about this project, obviously, my first thought was, I'm thinking of my trips up to Traverse City and touring the wineries, and I'm thinking about giant stainless steel drums that are fermenting and making wine, and I'm thinking about, you know, grape orchards in the backyard and vineyards, and that is not what is occurring here. But I'll let them hit that a little bit more detail for you. You know, based on the size of their house, the amount of floor space they tend to occupy to run this operation, we're still of the opinion that it will be and will remain accessory. I mentioned to you earlier that we've got to keep that proper balance. We don't want this to have the appearance of a business. We want it to look just like every other home in the neighborhood. John's already hit on the need for a license from the Liquor Control Commission. That is due to, I think it's in two parts. One is the sale, ultimately, that they expect to take this product out to farmers' markets, whatnot, sell the product. And I think also it involves the quantity that they intend to produce each, and I think it's on an annual basis. Again, I'm going to let the applicant get into greater detail on that. And then the last point I have is, as part of the review process, we did run this through both police and fire, because obviously there could, or there may have been, some concerns from that angle. Both were actually involved earlier in the process because of the liquor license request. Liquor license requests typically go through the police chief in a given community. So Chief Porciarelli was already aware of it even before we were, as a home occupation. I kind of put in quotes here. They've both signed off on it. The chief, Chief Murdock, the fire chief, did have, he did have some concerns and some questions. Unfortunately, he's out of town this week. We tried to, we tried to get him here and/or get something a little more detailed for you in writing. But I can tell you, in speaking with the applicant and speaking with Lori, that they did have a very thorough conversation with the applicant, and I'm of the impression that Chief Murdock, again, is, all of his concerns have been met, his questions have been answered as they relate to any potential safety concerns. The one point, this is the last one on here, is that to make sure the operation stays in the form that has been proposed, to make sure there's no changes, to make sure there's no problems, the applicant and Chief Murdock came to agreement on allowing the fire, either the fire marshal or the fire chief, to go and conduct an annual inspection of the property, of the house, of the operation, to make sure that they're still working within those levels and those protocols that, again, that they're presenting to you as to how they will function. So the last two items there, I just put in parentheses on my slide. If you're going to consider approving this this evening, I would suggest that you include board approval of the liquor license, as well as the requirement for fire department inspection, at least on an annual basis, as conditions, again, if you're going to consider approval.
Take a good summary, sir.
With that, I'd be happy to take any questions, Mr. Chair, or certainly can, again, I know the applicant's got a lot more detail behind this than I, but if there's anything I can try to address.
Why don't we go to the applicant at this point?
Sure.
And you can kind of stand by, since your microphone is on the fridge.
Absolutely. Throw that back.
Sir, I wasn't, I think I may have mispronounced your name. Is it Boder or Bader?
Bader.
Bader. Well, my apologies.
No problem.
I got it wrong. That's okay. Mr. Bader, welcome to the planning commission.
Thank you.
I didn't know we were serving refreshments.
Yeah.
Just samples of how this all began. So, again, Nick and Jennifer Bader, 8400 Concord. Thank you very much for this evening. Appreciate the opportunity as well. We proposed a document giving a little bit of a synopsis or a background of how this began and how this started. We moved to the island about two years ago. This became a hobby for us about, say, close to a year back, and wanted to take a hobby and turn it into profitability. And that's basically where we're at today. We started looking and reviewing what the requirements were for the state of Michigan, and looked at the process. And it's a very simple process, as long as you've got the right ingredients and you understand exactly how the basic makeup works of wine. We take, basically, it's fruit extract, and we take that concentrate, we mix it into the primary. It sits in the primary for roughly seven to, five to seven days, or 14, depending on what recipe we're making. After that, we move it from the primary to the secondary. Secondary gives it the ability to breathe a little bit, and it takes on the stage two. Stage two takes it off the yeast and allows it to continue the fermentation process. And we take any, if we're going to make a flavored wine in a recipe that's got more of a fruit base to it, opposed to just grape. And that's kind of some of the samples that we have here. It's a real neat and interesting blend. We've got a green apple riesling. You've got a dragon fruit raspberry sauvignon. I mean, these are really different than our local community can even provide. So we move it to the secondary, it stays there for approximately two more weeks, any mixes for the F packs, like I mentioned, and then we take it to a bottling process. The same unit that we use and siphon that we use from taking it from the primary to the secondary is also doubles as the bottle filler. It's a very, again, simple process. You've got a stem on the end, pressure release, you let it go, it stops. So you can move your, from bottle to bottle to bottle, and that continues on. We have a corking process, and that's already loaded, and Jen can show you a cork a bottle.
Bottling.
Pretty much done. Ta-da.
Uh-huh.
And then to seal the tops, boiled water, drop it in, you seal it. So the process itself, in going back to what Brian indicated, we've got two daughters at home. One's 14, the other one's 12. Primary focus for our home is our residence. That's why we're there. Don't want to do any alterations to it, have no intending, no intentions of doing such. In fact, I'd want to be able to build this big enough to step away from the home, put a business on the comb, get it out of our residence, because I don't want that around my children anyways. So with that being said, we also don't want to invest capital, capital cash flow at this point on a chance. Today's economy, let's face it, we want to make sure that we're doing something that's sustainable, and you don't want to just go ahead and go in with the guns blazing and cowboy it. Not to be another empty building six months from line. You want to do something that's sustainable, that you actually can do, and create a nice quality here on the island. So when you look at the quantity of what we're looking at and what we're proposing, even when we met with the, because we already have started the meeting process with the SEC and have invited them into the residence, I've seen the operation and the application. The state of Michigan allows you to produce 200 gallons of wine annually without any permit, any license, any regulations whatsoever. From private consumption, you can give it away, you can do whatever you want. That's the state of Michigan's already set up that way. We're asking to produce an additional 50 gallons. 50 gallons at that point would convert into, what is that, 120 bottles, roughly? So when you start looking at the numbers here, it's really minimal. 105 cases, my standard pickup truck can haul 25 cases of wine completed as it sits with the tunnel cover over it, completely sealed, you'd never even know it had a load in there. So from a delivery outbound, we just, we're trying to do a feasibility study. And if you're familiar with any of that from an accounting standpoint, you want to make sure that you can ensure profitability and sustainability. There were a couple of items that were identified as questions pertaining to our application and were outlined rather well. When we looked at some of the items that were here, it makes you think a little bit to make sure you put proper controls in place. And I kind of outlined them in the email. I'm not sure if everybody had an opportunity to review those.
We got this today, but it would help if you would kind of like run through it, since some people haven't.
I will. Not a problem. The first part pertaining to line item number one that came across is there was another individual that was involved in this process. That is indeed true. When we moved into the area, and two doors down from us is a very good friend of ours, Jason Etienne Amaro. Jason's involvement in this, from this perspective, is to do the marketing, the numbers, the bookkeeping. Sometimes you're really good at certain things, and there's others that you're not. And as signs of maturity, you need to know what you're good at. From that perspective, Jason is behind the scenes. He does more of the financials, account receivable, account payables, making sure that everything is in line. Part of the controls that are set in place for this with the state of Michigan is also the TTB documents of the tobacco tax bureau, making sure that on a monthly report, regardless if they're sales or not, you have to pay off taxes for them, and you have to generate a report based on what was produced and what was sold. So that has to be done on a monthly basis. That's just something electronically that's submitted in. Again, that's the role of what Jason has in this part. Marketing, website, any invoices that go out, that's the role. So it's behind the scenes, more from an administrative standpoint. Line item number two that was identified, three-put gallons, the timeframe, I think I may have covered that in just a brief synopsis. Again, it's about a four-week process. There are some other recipes that are out there that take a little bit longer to make. Not our cup of tea, meaning that you can't compete with two-buck truck. If you're a wine drinker and you understand that, you're not producing that. And Brian's correct, we're not going to retrofit and put a 1,000-gallon fermenter in our dining room. Number one, I don't believe that our structural code is at the standard for that much weight. But regardless, the concept that we have here is using the smaller containers, do it based on blend and need, for that matter, and develop it from there. The materials for us to pick up, the loads and anything that we're talking about from making and blending our recipes, I can pick up 25 cases of wine and enough material to cover us for an entire month, stick it in the backseat of my pickup truck with a passenger. So again, it's not, it's concentrate. So if anybody understands that, again, we're talking about a smaller amount, and then you spread it out based on just water. The volume for McComb, again, was another, it's another good point, question, because again, as we've discussed, Jennifer and I, we don't want this to be a business that runs out of our primary residence on a consistent basis. This is a trial sample for us. We do have a vision that has, it's phase two, if you would. We do a tasting room on McComb, make it a large enough facility out of the back end to do large amounts of wine that you can deliver to your local establishments, restaurants, your yacht clubs, and have a private labeled wine that they can have for them with their recipe on it, and therefore you can only get that wine and be frequent at their establishment. That's where the concept goes to. We have no contract blending wine. And that's really what this is all about, is based on the need and the order from each one of the clients that we have. Item two, number five, any fumes that come off, is it flammable? Is one of the questions that was on here. It does emit a CO2, so it's a carbon dioxide, not monoxide. No, it is not flammable. Carbon dioxide they actually use in fire extinguishers, because it sucks the oxygen out of a flame, therefore putting it out. So it's just the opposite from that perspective. We did some research. We found out from the NASA scientists that the Peace Lily is one of the top 15 house plants that you can have that can create the best home environment. So of course we have that. We put a punch balloon, a kid's punch balloon that you'd find at Kroger, and we put them over the top of the fermenter piece to capture the gas. So we don't want to subject our family, ourselves, at that point, to any kind of fumes at any point, just to make sure. And the third item that we purchased, I don't have delivered yet, which, based on my FedEx tracking, landed in Romulus today, is a carbon dioxide tester. It was one of the only two that we could find on the market. Ordered it from Amazon, have it installed. Now, all these items I did discuss with Chief Murdock, and he was more than satisfied with the discussion and was in support of this. And as we also discussed, we never want to put ourselves, our family, any other members on the island and township in any harm's way at any point in time for a venture that we decided to do. We invited our neighbor here today, just to show his support as well. He doesn't have an orange arrow over his home. But kidding around. With that being said, when we discussed it, I welcomed him in to do an annual inspection of our home, because we want to be up and up, we want this to be known and have it out there for everyone. So are there any other questions, or is there anything I didn't touch that you'd like to be, see discussed?
I'll tell you what, we'll run around the table here and see if any questions or comments that people might have for you.
Okay.
Ryan, let's start with you.
Sure. First, I want to applaud your guys' initiative. I think it's great that you guys are, have that entrepreneurial spirit, and it's great for economic development in Groceal as well as greater Down River. So I'm proud to see that happening. I don't foresee any, you know, problems based on testimony here today, as well as the, you know, the analysis done by our consultant. So I feel comfortable with it as well. You know, I live, you know, ways away, but still within the same neighborhood, and I've got small children, and I feel fine with it as well. So I, you know, I have no further comments, and I feel prepared to make a decision. Thank you again.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Brian. Steve, comments, please.
Great presentation, and, you know, I think you have a good niche market here, and I think you'll be very successful if you stick to it. Yeah, I would, I would like to see if there's room for it. You know, if you drive around the island right now, you see many people that are self-employed, and their trucks have their business names on it, they have all those things on it throughout the island. I wouldn't mind going down their street and seeing this, this name on their, their truck on the front stoop of their house. I think it's important to grow and thrive in today's economy, to know who's out there and where you can purchase these things from, and to help support the local folks and to move these businesses forward. So I guess that's one area that I would have minded, you know, more open discussion on and challenge. We've already seen the precedent set out there by many businesses, self-employed, through their homes. They are advertising, and they're doing these things right now. That's all.
Good job. Thanks. Okay. Brian, would you please comment on what the rules are with respect to ordinances, with respect to signs in residential districts, and how the township forces those?
Yeah, there actually are provisions that do allow some signage in residential districts. However, it is specifically prohibited for a home occupation. That is one of the things, if you refer back to 19.15, currently under the ordinance, any signage or any outdoor advertising for a home occupation is prohibited.
And the applicant is proposing what?
They are proposing no outdoor advertising of any sort.
Okay. Additional comments, Steve? Ann?
This is, well, this is a different scale, and I'm familiar with. I do have friends that make wine for themselves.
Okay.
And seems to be a rather simple overall process, if you know what you're doing.
That's the key. That is the key. Thank you, Ryan. Jim?
Just some quick questions. It's just a blind, we're not real, you're not producing the wine, you're blending it, right? The wine that comes in, not the apple and the what, not that you're adding to, how does that come in? Does that come in bulk, or how do you?
It, you can order it based on, when you're ordering in your concentrate, it also comes concentrated, and you can actually select based on, okay, I want to make a dragon fruit raspberry, so I'm going to go ahead and order that kind of fruit pack. What's your quantity? What's the size that you're blending? And you can order based on that same size. So when everything comes in, and it's delivered, and it's ready for pickup, you actually have what you need in that same delivery.
Interesting.
It's a different concept. I mean, it truly is, when you look at the overall big picture, it's a different concept, and unlike anything I've ever taken advantage of before. So when we started making this from a, just a personal use standpoint, it's like, I like that.
Very well put together. I really don't have any questions. And this email helped out too, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Eric?
Just a couple of questions. One, is there any outdoor activity proposed with this? Storage, mixing, fermenting?
No, sir.
It's all done in basement?
Never, actually, it's in our dining room, just because of the fact that I don't want it done in a basement. I don't think that myself personally, I want to consume something that was made in somebody's basement. And from just an ethical standpoint, that's just who I am. So when we look at this, it's done in the main living area. So therefore, we use our dining room table. We eat in our kitchen, we, it's a functional home. So this is done very small scale. You see the space it takes up. So that's our application.
So outdoor, I mean, as far as max capacity, you're saying 250 gallons per year? What would, at what point would you, you know, would we say that's outside of a home occupation?
I have no idea. From this perspective, when we look at it, again, there's no need for me to do any adjustments or any alterations to the home. I'm not looking to put any of these things all over the place, and I'm sure as heck not looking to subject my family to it. So from that perspective... it. So from that perspective, the 250 gallons is really based on the feasibility for us to be able to move it to a commercial location.
So as far as 250 gallons, that would be working like a couple hours every day?
Oh, no. Man, what do you think? You might have an hour and a half, two hours? Probably two hours, based on a six gallon. And you can run that, and that's really, that's even more than that. It's probably more than 12. So it's two kids, it'll take you about six hours, or two hours to just knock out two kids. And then you come back and you visit it based on timeframe. It's not a very aggressive timeframe to do this. So it's, I don't know how to even answer the question you're asking. I mean, from a timeframe standpoint, this isn't a full-time job, and nor do I want to buy another job.
Those are the questions I have. Thank you, Eric. I greatly appreciate the clarity of the application, okay? And when the materials came to me on Friday, and I put the questions out to you, your answers were right on, just, you know, straightforward and to the point.
Thank you.
That makes the review process so much simpler. You understood what the ordinances were, you complied with the ordinances, there's no issues.
Thank you very much.
It's refreshing to have applicants approach things that direction.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on this? Any further comments?
Only one question that I do have, is that if we were to make, as Brian suggested, the annual inspection a contingency on the continued operation of this business, I mean, that's a pretty open-ended statement, right? I mean, Duncan, what are the criteria that he's inspecting?
Unfortunately, I've not had a specific conversation with Chief Murdock in terms of that. But my guess is it would be, you know, he's going to look and see what they're doing, make sure it's consistent with the way it was described to him, and check for any potential safety concerns. I don't think it's anything different than he would do when he walked in, you know, any other house on the island. We may be able to frame it such that the condition is maybe a little more specific. But I think Chief Murdock, you know, is going to look at whatever he needs to, to make sure that this is not causing any safety problems, not only for the occupants of the house, but especially for the neighbors as well. So again, I don't know that I can put a specific item-by-item approach to that, but I'm sure Chief will know what he's looking for. I don't know if that's a good enough answer or not, but.
Eric? Yeah, I mean, I wish I'd liked something with a little more, you know, definition, not only to protect, you know, the neighbors, but then also to protect the applicants, right? I mean, Chief's a great guy, but, you know, what happens if he gets hit by a bus?
I think we could refer-
That guy's not such a great guy.
Well, the township wouldn't.
So my expectation would be something with the effect of, you know, conditional annual inspection of safety and process controls.
Yeah, I was just going to say, a safety inspection, that type, because that really should be the focus, is, you know, are they violating any fire codes? Are they now brewing something different? You know, for instance, has he gone from wine to, you know, to a liquor that is flammable, that is, you know, going to create problems? Those types of things that would potentially incur additional safety problems beyond the way it's already been described.
Would it be fair to, since this is going to come up in front of the township board as the next step, you know, ask as part of our approval to have Chief Murdock define specifically what he's looking for to present to you?
Yeah, I think, I'm confident he's able to do that, you know, something that the applicant and chief are usually agreeable with. I'd just like to have some kind of set criteria, so it's got to he said, she said, here's the, you know, here's the four or five things we're looking at, and then we, you know, we move on, everyone's happy.
Okay, then, can I suggest then, in our motion, we say a process and safety review by the fire chief, as per the standards, to be presented to the township board on whenever this application moves forward?
Sure.
Would that be, that way, that'll give him a good chance to kind of define it and lay it out, and then when the question is raised at the board, the four or five points are clear.
Yeah.
Okay, additional discussion?
Quick question.
Yes, on number five, the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, do they actually ever come on the premise to look at anything or no, on an annual basis?
It was here Friday.
Okay, so they do come, is it an annual thing they'll come for?
It is, an annual inspection.
And what are they looking for that would be different than Chief Murdock?
Question for the LCC. I myself, I myself don't know the answer to that. I do know that in our discussion with them, just as it has been here, phase two, moving ourselves to a local commercial location, they're inspecting the building, they're inspecting, making sure that you've got the proper egress, that you have the proper plumbing facilities. So they are inspecting for those items, and she kind of outlined those. Because I asked that question in phase two, what do we need to be ready for when we make this move?
And the reason I ask is, you know, maybe it may be important for people at the board to know that we may be duplicating resources here. If the governing body from Michigan is already coming and doing this on an annual basis, that may already have detailed documentation of what is being looked for. And I guess that'd be up for Chief Duncan and the police chief to review. I don't know list that criteria, but-
She is assigned to us. I mean, that's, we are one of her follow-ups. So she is definitely assigned to us as our point of contact regarding all LCC involvement. Our monthly reporting, everything has to go through her. So you are correct, from that perspective. We do have to report back to her, and there is an annualized review with her, face-to-face, on location, so.
Additional comments, Steve? And you had a question?
Do you have to renew your license every year?
There is a fee, and there is another inspection, making sure from a background standpoint, that we are compliant with the state of Michigan, yes.
Additional discussion?
One thing I would like to add, I do think that the fire chief's annual inspection is still valid, just because this is a home occupation, this is not a business. So the stuff that the state liquor board may or may not be looking for, you know, may not necessarily involve the same stuff that Duncan's going to be looking for, because Duncan's going to be concerned about the neighborhood and the safety of the neighbors.
The local inspection, when we discussed it, my door's open. I mean, we've already had the discussion with Chief, so absolutely.
Additional discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just think that with home occupations in general, I think at any time that, you know, basically the neighbors are inspecting it all the time. So it's like, if something came up and, you know, all of a sudden something changed that was impacting, we'd know right away. And, you know, a condition of home occupation is that it doesn't impact the neighborhood. So I think that might, you know, there might not be a need for another inspection on top of that, because, you know, it'd already be done for us.
Please. Additional discussion? Okay, then, I would entertain a motion, please, regarding this application.
I would broadly approve the application for home occupation, home occupation, what is this, site plan review?
Sketch plan review.
Sketch plan review, based on two conditions. One is the conditional approval of the Michigan Liquor Control Commission license, and the second one is conditional on an annual inspection of safety and process controls by the fire chief or his designated, the details in conflict of which will be worked out before the board meeting.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there support?
A second.
We have a support from Ann. Is there additional discussion? On that note, I'll call a question. In favor of the motion, please seek to probably say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. You can move to the next stage. You'll be probably on the agenda, I don't know when the next board meeting is, but-
The next board meeting is annually on the 26th.
26th.
Yeah, so it's unclear whether this will make the published date for that or not. We can check tomorrow at the office.
Okay, yeah.
I suspect it's a little tight, because it's typically the Friday prior.
Yeah, I think you're right. It won't get on that fast?
Yeah, so it'll be the second Monday in April then.
Second Monday in April. You'll be back after the township board. Thank you very much, folks. Let's move to the next item on the agenda, which is a public hearing for zoning ordinance revisions. The background on this is the planning commission is responsible for the maintenance and updating of the township zoning ordinances. The goals that we have when we do these are to make sure that the ordinances are clear and concise, so that they can be easily interpreted and easily enforced. We want to make sure that the ordinances reflect the community values and reflect the master plan, and finally, that the ordinances we have are consistent with state law, which sometimes changes. So tonight, we're looking, we're going to hold a public hearing on some proposed minor changes, okay, to several articles, to six specifically, that we're making minor changes to. These changes were developed by the subcommittee for the zoning ordinance. Jim and Jay Fucci and I met on this here a few weeks ago, three weeks ago, something like that, and we set some priorities for what we wanted to change. We first wanted to correct any inconsistencies. If we said, you know, in one part of the ordinance that we should do it one way, and in a different part of the ordinance you said something else, we wanted to make sure we fixed that. So fixing inconsistencies was a top priority. The second thing we looked at was, for high priority, were ambiguities which were impacting community development, where they would look at the ordinance and they couldn't easily understand and communicate what the requirements were to the applicant. Those we wanted to fix, and there was a specific list of those that we went through and put them on the list for tonight. In none of these, did we get into anything which fundamentally changes any strategic community planning factors? In other words, these are very simple. There weren't any big-ticket items in there that we felt, you know, would prompt an hour of discussion from the planning commission. You know, those sorts of things, if we have those on our list, and we may have a couple of those, we want to bring those out where there's plenty of time for communication with the public and dialogue among the commission, not just take it to a public hearing and move on it. So those were excluded. So this is about as simple a list as we could get, and it encompasses the six articles that you see there in the agenda. As far as the process is concerned, the way ordinances are amended is defined in Article 25, Section 3, entitled Review Procedures. And it's a two-step process. First, the planning commission holds a public hearing, okay, then we make a recommendation. That recommendation goes to the township board for their review and approval, and at that point, it becomes an ordinance that we can work with. So in addition to this, I would say that the initial list that we had, Ryan and the township staff have also found a variety of typotype problems, where wrong things were referenced, the numbers weren't right, just spelling was wrong, you know, incorrect words, you know, these sorts of things. They had a laundry list of these things, and Brian and Able, and working with the township clerk, was able to determine that those sorts of things can legally be changed without going through the planning commission process. So the laundry list that we had, it had another dozen items on it. We were able to basically map those off by Brian going to the township clerk and getting that kind of a ruling. So we're following the procedures for those. Those are clear, and you don't see those tonight. The ones that you see now tonight, the simple and straightforward, next level, high priority items.
Yes, cleaning things up.
Yes. Now, Jim, you were in on that meeting. Did I summarize that? You want to add to that?
I think you guys hit the nail on the head, and I think we were also impacted on the budget at the time too, as far as what we wanted to do.
Yeah, that's exactly, that's right. Budget was the other factor on this too, so, okay.
You go along with it.
All right, so that's a little background on this. Brian, I'll ask you to kind of run through, if you would, the scope of the changes, and we'll take these, and what I'd like to do is, you talk about one, we'll find out if anybody has any comments on them, okay? Or any objection to the proposed change, and we'll talk about it kind of one at a time, so that when we get to the end, you know, everybody's input would have been offered on every item individually, not go all the way to the end and then try and go backwards.
Try and talk about 10 pages worth of changes, absolutely.
So lead us through it one at a time.
Absolutely. I want to just hit back on, you know, one comment that was made, and hopefully, I think the process we've set up now will really assist this. You may recall in the past, you know, sometimes these things tend to drag out, and when we don't hit them and attack them aggressively, that's when it starts to drag, and that's when budgets start to get impacted, because it takes so long. If it takes six months to get through, you know, one set of amendments, it's not really a great use of time or resources. So that's why really, this one in particular, and again, my hope is that you'll, as a full commission, you'll agree with the subcommittee and myself and staff, that these are pretty straightforward changes. We're not really changing a lot of context. We're hoping to improve and clarify and have consistency, and we can really do that in a pretty quick manner, which is why we went from subcommittee about a month ago to public hearing tonight. So this is a lot quicker than we've normally done ordinance amendments in the past, and hopefully, we can keep the momentum going too, as we get into the new fiscal year, and the subcommittee starts to look at the next set of priorities. So, but we're not going to worry about step two just yet. Let's worry about step one first tonight. One of the things you should have had is a cover in your packet, the new table. This is something we've been working on for a while. And my thought is that, you know, hopefully, this is something hang on to these, and we will update these as we go, because there are always questions and ideas and issues that are popping up, and we can always add to this. And ideally, when we start to knock things off, you know, as hopefully we will this evening, we can start to take those off our list, so that we're always working from the same concise list of potential amendments, things that we're at least discussing or debating. We may not get to them, they may not be a priority right now, they may be something we want to make sure that we look at in the future, however. So hopefully, the list makes sense, and, you know, I'm always open to critique, so if at any point you find that there's a column or something on that list that could be improved, let me know. But again, the idea is to summarize and condense. So we've already talked a little bit. Subcommittee met, established priorities off of all of the potential amendments we had on our list previously. We have added some new ones that have come up over the course of the past year or two, and those are all arranged according to priority. We've noted them as As, Bs, and Cs. Our attempt here this evening was to knock out, I should clarify, A being the higher priority, C being the lower priority. What we were trying to knock out tonight are the first set of A priorities. These were the ones that we needed, as Jim and John have both explained to you. These are issues we've had, sometimes on a daily basis, a couple of them more critical than others, but some of them are just simple, quick fixes. Some of them are interpretations that have been made and have been consistent over time, but maybe the language in the ordinance wasn't as clear as it could have or should have been. So we're trying to attack all of those items. So with that, Mr. Chair, I think what I'm going to do is, as opposed to going through the summary list, I'm going to pull up the actual amendments, which you all do have in front of you too, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I think it'll be easier, we'll just go through, as you noted, we'll just go through one by one, if it'll open. I may have just messed this whole presentation up. Here we go. Okay, item one, Section 2.1 of the ordinance. This is about as simple as an amendment can get. This is the section of your ordinance which establishes all of the different, not residential, but all the different zoning districts within the community. A couple of years ago, we created the Hickory Island Single Family District, as you may recall, to address some specific issues we had down there. That district was never added to this section. That's all this is. So this is a clarification point. It's consistent with the way the ordinance is laid out, doesn't really change much else.
Okay, Brian, should we keep going, unless somebody has questions or specific comments? Okay, so move to the next one.
Absolutely. I'll go as quickly as I can. Section 3.3, this will be our second item this evening. This is one of those situations where the ordinance probably wasn't written as clearly as it should have been. The ordinance has always allowed, or historically allowed, one garage as an accessory use. In all of my time with the township, we have never prohibited somebody from doing an attached garage and a detached garage. By strict definition, that is two garages. I think the intent was that this was to mean one detached garage- I think the intent was that this was to mean one detached garage, because that's consistent with the rest of your ordinance. But in our thoughts, the simplest clarification on this is to change it to a garage is allowed as an accessory use. Whether it's attached, whether it's detached, we're not specifically limiting it to the one, if that makes sense. So in essence, we would continue with past practice where you could theoretically have a detached and an attached garage, and now that I'm thinking about that, I wonder if we should have not said "a garage" and we should have just said "garages." Second-guessing myself at the podium.
All right.
Does it seem clear to everybody? Because I just sort of tried to talk myself out of it. The fact that a garage would be allowed as an accessory use, the idea here is, we don't want that restriction of currently where it reads "one garage is allowed."
I think it's clear as it is.
Okay.
If you had an attached garage, and you wanted another garage, would that become then an accessory building?
Yes.
Okay. That's clearer than the way it is.
So why doesn't it just say "a detached garage"?
Well, that's covered, it could. I guess the idea was that we didn't necessarily want to, you know, distinguish between attached or detached. You can have a garage as accessory to your principal building. If it's detached, you can have an attached garage as part of your house.
Yeah, right.
But an attached garage as part of the principal building?
Correct.
So it wouldn't be considered a secondary, you know, an accessory use?
Right, but it's still a garage, and the way it reads right now, you can have one garage, but it's never been interpreted that way. I don't want to muddy the waters more, so... Are we good?
Jim?
I'm fine with it.
Yeah? Steve?
I'm just surprised we're spelling out that it's for storage of vehicles. I mean, many places don't even, houses don't even store vehicles, they can't get them in there. So it just seems to be very scope-limiting, saying "storage of vehicles owned and used." I don't know. I'm fine with how it is, sir.
Brian?
I don't want to beat up on it.
Okay. All right, let's move on, then.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Next item is 3.3(c). This is one that in my history with the township, we have never seen anyone pursue, and our discussion on this amongst the subcommittee and my office in the past has been, to me, it really goes against what we want in a home occupation. I think earlier tonight, being case in point, your ordinance does have a provision currently whereby someone could come in, request a home occupation, and via the special land use process, they could have an outside employee as part of that. Again, nobody has ever pursued this in my time with the township. I don't know that anybody's ever pursued it, you know, prior to my time with the township. I've never heard of this occurring, and again, it generally goes against the intent of what a home occupation is supposed to be. So our idea was simply to eliminate it because of the potential issues that it could raise.
Comments on that?
If it's not an issue, I don't see why we don't keep it in there, if it's a possibility. I mean...
Well, the issue here is that home occupation in Article 19, that we just said, Article 19 says if you have a home occupation, there's no employees. This turns around and says home occupation employing one person, okay? That's an inconsistency. And so what our subcommittee looked at, we said, Article 19 is the driver for home occupations. This is a legacy from years ago. Take it out, that's what we said. Fine? Fine?
Okay. The second part of this very same item is simply a couple of pages later, whereby we are also, in essence, removing Paragraph H, because that is the specific provision that relates to the outside employee. So again, that's for consistency, so that would come out as part of that same amendment. The next item is under 7.2. This is in the Macomb Street District, and this is one that staff and I have struggled with for the last few years on some level. Not that it was overly difficult, but it was oftentimes just creating some issues for homeowners and in terms of staff in applying it. You may recall, many years ago, we set up a process whereby we have limitations on floor area ratio and lot coverage ratio, and those limitations are based on the size of the surrounding homes. So in essence, we're looking at the character of a neighborhood, determining how big the homes are now, and then setting a maximum threshold of how big your new home could be. Trying to apply that to the Macomb Street District is a little bit difficult, because there just aren't that many detached single-family dwellings on Macomb Street. If there were a concentrated area, it makes perfect sense to try to keep those within the same character. What we found we were doing was to try to find the 10 nearest, we were basically running from one end of Macomb Street to the other end of Macomb Street, whereby each residence bared no resemblance to the others that we were looking at. So what we've proposed here is to go back, just for the Macomb Street District now, to go back to a fixed FAR and LCR for single-family dwellings.
Comments? Anne? Eric? Steve? Brian? Okay, move on.
Next item, 17.5. This is the waterfront provisions. This is, again, this is one of those instances of clarification and consistency. The ordinance currently reads, for the notification process as it relates to a waterfront structure, I submit an application to put a new dock in. That application comes into community development. Community development then sends out notice of the application to the surrounding properties along the waterfront. The way it reads right now is, the requirement is a 300-foot notification, so in essence, think about your standard notification process. You notify all property owners within 300 feet, but there's this caveat that's written in, that the township will make a good-faith effort to expand that notification boundary and notify to 500 feet. It's one of those things where it really just depended, and I certainly, from my perspective and trying to provide my guidance to the township, I hate to see different standards used for similar cases. I didn't want applicant A to come in and have his request notified to 300 feet, but then applicant B come in and have his request notified to 500 feet, for whatever the reason might be. Maybe it just wasn't enough time, whatever the case might be, but I don't want to treat people differently. So in order to avoid that, what we've set up here is sort of the greater approach in this case, and we're just going to change this specifically to a 500-foot notice. So we will no longer have this idea of, well, I have to do 300, but I'm going to try to do 500. No more trying, we're doing. So this would, in essence, just require a 500-foot notice. That's the first part. The second part relates to that in that one of those property owners who receives that notice has the ability to come back to the township, object to the request, and request a public hearing before the planning commission. Well, public hearings cost the township money. Those are things that are not budgeted for, because they occur, as many applications as come in, there's the potential for those to occur. We had this happen once, really, last year. It's happened multiple times, but last year being the most prevalent example. You may recall, we had a petitioner trying to put in a new jet ski hoist. One of the surrounding property owners objected, said, "I want to talk about this in public." Well, the applicant then has to come in and present to you, we have to have a public hearing, we have to publish in the paper, send out more notifications, my office has to do a review of it. These things all take time and money. So the idea here is, we're going to make it clear that the applicant, in that instance, the owner, the one doing the project, is responsible for the costs and fees associated with coming before the commission. We had to have that conversation with a couple of applicants in the past couple of years, and there was nothing in the ordinance we could point to to show them that it was their responsibility. So again, another point, clarification, it's how we have operated. The applicant, I think, eventually went along with us, if I recall correctly, but...
Comments or questions about either of those two that Brian just discussed? Are we okay?
Two questions.
Yes.
I guess the first would be, is it possible to put kind of a "not to exceed" value at all? And then the second is, when does the, I guess, the madness stop? So in that example, if the person who didn't want the jet ski lift kept requesting time and time again, another public hearing, the burden's on the applicant, by what you stated, when does that end?
You can only request one public hearing, because there would only be one, one public hearing for the project.
For the project.
So that would not, that's not something that would carry over.
People can't keep requesting public hearings?
No. All, we could notify 50 people, all 50 could request a public hearing, we're having one hearing. We're not going to have 50 years.
Is it a way to do a "not to exceed," so an applicant knows going into this what the financial burden could potentially be?
I think it might be worthwhile to discuss how fees in general are defined, okay? It's a board function. Would you talk about that, please?
Yeah, the, I think, pretty much on an annual basis, they may not touch them every year, but the board sets and establishes the fee schedule for all the different types of reviews that go on within the township. So that's something, that's why we don't want to refer to a specific number, because if by ordinance, we refer to a specific number, the board then changes the fee schedule, we have to then go through the amendment process to change our ordinance. So the way this was intended was simply to fall in line with whatever the board deems the reasonable and appropriate fee, again, usually on an annual basis, although maybe not quite every year, so...
Eric, any comments on that?
No, I think that's a pretty fair way of doing it.
Would you refer to it there, Eric, maybe "not to exceed" the fee schedule developed by the board, or something like that? I mean, I would be...
Just say "per the fee schedule."
I didn't hear what you said, Eric.
Just say "per the fee schedule," just so that they know what...
"per the fee schedule." Okay, so the comment here is to add "per the fee schedule" relative to costs. Everybody all right with that? Brian?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. I just can't see you down there.
Oh.
Okay, you got that one, Brian?
Yeah, I think so. I may have to come back to that to get some clarification, because I think, I mean, that's what it already says. You're responsible for the costs associated as established by the township board.
That works for me in regards to my question I originally asked you. I'm okay with how it is written, if the group up here is okay with it, because Eric clarified that the township board did establish...
Right.
Those...
Okay, then let's leave it alone, let's move on.
Okay. Sorry about that. I just, I want to make sure that...
This is what we have to do.
It's an ordinance, so I want to make sure that we get the wording exactly the way you guys want it.
This is the way to do it.
Okay. I'm not going to go through these necessarily point by point, because they're all similar. This is Section 19.11, these are accessory structure regulations, and this particular component is in regards to the table under Paragraph D. This is the table that summarizes the yard placement, the setback requirements, the size limitations, all based upon the type of lot that you have. What we found was that there were some inconsistencies with this table and the text that follows. And really, the table oftentimes referenced the text that follows, but yet they said two different things. So this is an effort to hopefully clarify, number one, because ideally, tables are pretty useful for putting quick, short chunks of information, and ideally, this table now hits every potential issue we might have in terms of what type of lot you are, how big of a garage you want to build, detached, and then where you can put it and what your setbacks have to be. I'll give you one specific example here. You know, the current read of your ordinance, "On an internal lot of greater than 900 square feet, it must meet principal building, side, and rear yard setback requirements." If you scroll down to the text that follows, if you look, again, red is existing, I think we all knew that, I should have clarified that, "This now references that provided accessory building shall be setback from all lot lines a distance equal to the height of the accessory building." Well, now, we have a table saying you have to meet principal building, but we have text saying you have, your setback has to be the height of the building, and they don't jive, because a rear yard setback for a principal building is 40 feet. We're not ever going to see a 40-foot, we better not ever see a 40-foot tall accessory building. So the max height on accessory would be in the range of 12 to 15 to 17. The idea was really, and it was understood, the idea was that you basically had to increase your side yard. If you wanted a 17-foot tall building, which we haven't quite seen, but we've seen a couple of big buildings in the last few years, then you had to, instead of a six-foot side yard, you had to have a 17-foot side yard, lessening the impact. But again, on more than one occasion in the last three, four years, five years, 10 years, staff has been forced to try to explain to an applicant why all of a sudden, they've built a structure that was setback from the property to the height of the building, and they then have to explain to them why that doesn't fly, even though that's what it says. So that's, you know, again, an example of inconsistency. We've been consistent in how we've enforced and applied the regulation, but this is something that when we put together, you know, gives staff the easy answer, and quite frankly, this should be simplified to the point that an applicant shouldn't even ever come up to that conclusion. It should be much simpler for them to use and say, "Okay, this is what I can do." So again, that's our idea here. The rest of it, again, is just sort of summarizing and blending the current text into, hopefully, a more manageable table.
And functionally, though, nothing changes.
Correct. All of this is still consistent.
It's consistent with the way we've been doing it. It's just something I'm making the wording line up with, with the reality.
Exactly. Heights are the same, sizes are the same, setbacks are the same. It's just blended into a more concise table, I hope.
Questions? Brian, Steve?
No.
Guys? Eric?
No.
Jim? Okay, let's move forward.
All right. And again, these next two really just related to what I was just talking about. So Paragraph 3 and Paragraph 4(c) are just making consistent with those height issues and those setback issues. So those are one and the same, based on the example I just posed. The next part, this is still the same section, mind it, it's still 1911. This is Paragraph I, and this is one, since I've been working with the township, which is now eight-plus years, this has been the biggest issue community development has faced. Your ordinance currently prohibits mechanical equipment in a side yard on a residential property. And I don't want anyone to name names here or anything, but I just want you guys to think about, you know, maybe where you live in your neighborhood. Think about if you've ever seen an air conditioner in a side yard as opposed to in a rear yard. Maybe you have, maybe you haven't. My guess is you have, because there are a ton of them out there. Most of them were approved many years ago. It was a practice of community development many, many, many years ago to allow side yard placement. In certain instances, they took a little bit of administrative discretion, if you will, said, "It makes sense, it's appropriate, we're going to allow it." Technically, that's not what the ordinance says. So the primary intent of the change to Paragraphs 1 and 2 is to allow placement in the side yard with two essential conditions. One, it's got to be in a non-required yard, that is, you have to meet the side yard setback. So if you're going to put air conditioning units in your side yard, you've got to at least have a six-foot setback from that side lot line. The second is, I should, there's three caveats. The second is a determination by community development, zoning administrator, whomever, that a rear yard placement would not be practical. That could be they're replacing units in a side yard, and in order to put them into the rear yard now, they have to completely redo all of the wiring, all of the hookups from a mechanical standpoint. Might be impractical to force that kind of a burden on a property owner. The last one is then, that we're also going to require screening, albeit we didn't specify what that would be. We're sort of leaving this to the discretion of community development, but you would have to screen it. Typically, I would think hedge row, shrubs, something to that effect, such that, you know, you're still protecting the views somewhat from the neighbor. So they would look at, hopefully, a hedge row as opposed to a couple of AC units in the side yard. So that is the last handful since we resolved Hickory Island issues. This has been probably the biggest thing they've dealt with on a day-to-day and week-to-week basis.
Okay, let's get comments. Anybody have any concerns with this? Anne? Eric? Jim? Brian? Steve? Makes sense?
Okay. And the other thing I want to point out, too, is that it's a "may," not a "shall." So the zoning administrator will have the discretion to say, "No, I'm sorry, you don't meet this." So you may think you meet it, but if staff doesn't think you meet it, you're going to put it in the rear yard where it was supposed to go all along. So just wanted to make sure I pointed that out. The last one... The last one on here, um, was something that has been on our list for quite a while. If you guys can think back a few years, when Jeff and I stood before you and tried to present, I think it was like 87 pages of ordinance amendments, which is...
I remember that, that was memorable.
That was a long night. Um, that's one of those things, this has been on the list since then. A few years ago, I think these were probably bigger, they were kind of an emerging planning and zoning trend. Um, we really haven't seen them come in, there was one instance, but it was a little bit different situation. Uh, and that was the idea of, of wood burning furnaces. These, again, kind of a, a trend a few years ago, we haven't really seen it become an issue, at least from a, a staff and a department standpoint. Um, but what we want to do is, is we want to prohibit locating a wood burning furnace within an accessory building. And this is consistent, this is pretty much the same language that, uh, that Jeff and I pitched to you probably three, three and a half years ago. So, just a clarification, in the event it comes up, want people to know, you can't put them in accessory buildings.
Comments on that? Eric, question?
Sure. What was, I guess, the 32nd synopsis of why, is it more of a fire hazard, is that the push for it, or was there actually a difference that were going down?
Potentially, they, you know, they can, they can, they produce a lot of smoke, a lot of fumes, um, they, they can be, they can be pretty harsh to a neighborhood, uh, and again, the idea here is, is simply to prohibit them from an accessory structure. Um, I, I'll be honest, this one dates back a while, I, I don't remember all of the specifics, but I know it was something community development did not want to allow, they wanted to make sure it was clear, that we would not allow these within accessory buildings.
I would call it a fielding complaints.
Could be.
But I, it's, five years may, it's been a long time.
I know, that's...
How is a wood fern, wood burning furnace defined? I mean, is that, does it include fireplaces and things of that nature? Uh, if, if it's just a, a brick structure that has like an open area to actually put some wood in, and it's basically more like a, a permanent, um, you know, firing for outdoors, or something of that nature, and yet, how is specifically...
No, I, I, the intent here is, is, it's something that you're burning wood and you're generating heat, and it's traveling through pipes of some sort to, to heat your residents. That's really the intent.
Okay. There's no questions? Okay, let's move.
Right, last one. Ah, last two, sorry about that. Got ahead of myself. Section 19.16, uh, general provisions, keeping of animals, this is, uh, again, this is another consistency item. Uh, your current ordinance says that keeping of livestock, other than horses, is prohibited in all zoning districts, per general provisions. If you look at Article 11, related to the public recreation district, keeping of livestock is listed as a special land use. They don't both fit. It's not prohibited, yet allowed. So, the idea here, and, and I should probably clarify, because it doesn't come up frequently, but, um, an example of keeping of livestock in a public recreation district would be Centennial Farm. Centennial Farm is zoned PRD, they could, and I think they do have some, um, form of keeping of livestock. And again, it's been, it's, it's the historic use of the property, it's been deemed appropriate, we don't necessarily want people raising cows in the middle of a subdivision, but, or, again, is one of those consistency things where, um, you can't have it prohibited by regulation, but yet allow it in a certain district. So, just wanted to put that clarification point in.
Okay, questions on that? Anne, you got a question? Jim, Eric, guys?
Um, yeah, I don't have any questions about the consistency thing, that's fine, but I was just wondering if we're looking at this, does it make sense to revisit, you know, maybe small, uh, small animals, because there's, you know, a number of communities that are looking towards actually implementing that you're allowed to have, you know, a few chickens in the front, in the backyard and things, and that's more about the home occupation, more about, you know, uh, the local foods movement, and so, more of the progressive communities are looking towards that, and so I thought we should at least entertain the idea at the moment.
I would suggest that, uh, you know, if that's a thought that a majority of commissioners want, we add it to the bottom of the list of, of the ones, proceed with this the way it is, so this is corrected, and then consider, uh, chickens or birds or whatever, as a, as a topic for the, uh, the subcommittee to look at. Jim, does that make sense to you?
It does.
It's okay with you? Jay's not here, so, so he agrees.
By default.
Is that okay with you?
Yeah, that's fine, I was just asking, because we're talking about it right now, if, if we're approving this, does it, do we save any money by looking at it now versus...
No.
Looking at it later?
No, this, this is, uh, this is 99% down the track.
Okay.
Best to finish it off, and then, uh, look for any modifications, as, as they might want to come down the road.
Great, thank you.
I, I will tell you, Mr. Chair, and just so the commission knows, it, it is, it is an excellent point. Um, the, the township has received a number of questions similarly posed to, to what Commissioner Pollack brought up, so, I, I do think it's important to add it to the list, so that at least we discuss it as an option, and how we might regulate it, but...
Do you put that on our master list when you, when you update, and potentially remove all these A items or clearing up?
Absolutely. Okay, no more teases, last item here. Uh, this is simply, this is one where, uh, earlier this evening, I would have suggested that maybe, I'll let Lori get her tape. Maybe this wasn't, um, necessarily appropriate, but, uh, but I can explain why, why I think it is, and, and hopefully everyone will be in agreement. Uh, we mentioned earlier, we had the home occupation before you earlier. Um, right now, they're listed as requiring sketch plan review, which is a planning commission function. The, uh, home occupations that we've had the last few years have generally been, I hate to call them no brainers, but they've kind of been no brainers. Tonight's was probably a little different, because it warranted a lot of additional discussion, and certainly, uh, clarification on process, volumes, safety, et cetera, that I think the commission needed to hear. Um, but what we're proposing is, because 90% of what we've seen has been very straightforward and very simple, we'd like to make home occupations an administrative review process, and the reason I made my opening statement of sort of rethinking it for a more complicated project like a winery, not knowing what that entailed before, uh, discussing with the applicant, is if staff, myself, Dale, whomever is going to participate in this, does not feel 100% comfortable with a home occupation request that comes in, anytime we do an administrative review, we always have the authority to bring it up in front of the planning commission. So, that's why I, I feel pretty comfortable that this would be an approach that will expedite those applications, where it's clear there is no, uh, there's no external impact or, or internal, for that matter. Uh, however, we still retain the ability to make it a public process, uh, if we deem it necessary.
Okay, uh, questions or comments on that? Anne, Eric, you guys alright with that? Jim? Brian, Steve?
I think it works.
Yes.
Yeah, if we can, uh, simplify the process and still have the same protection of the planning commission for, for major items, then we're fine. Okay, so, that was the last item?
That was the last item, I promise.
Okay, so we've gone through the, uh, the six ordinances that, uh, that have the proposed changes. Um, is there any additional discussion anybody wants to have, or any additional issues on, on these items? Okay, then on that note, I would entertain a motion, please. Oh, I have to formulate an open public hearing, now that we've all defined. So I will formulate an open public hearing, uh, on, uh, these proposed changes. Given the factors, no one in the audience, I will bring you back to the table and close the public hearing. Entertain a motion, please. Somebody give me a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
You have a motion for Anne, support.
Support.
Support from Eric. Call a question, all in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. Okay, now, at this point, I would entertain a motion regarding the, uh, the six ordinances that we have just finished reviewing.
Motion to recommend to the township board the, the changes to the zoning ordinance?
Okay, we have a motion from Brian to approve the, or recommend to the township board approval of the six, uh, ordinances that are being updated and changed. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Steve. I'll call a question, or a discussion?
Just quick, I'd just like to ask Brian with the, uh, presentation that you just went through, if you can forward that to the, uh, to Carol, so that she can put it in the, uh, board packets for the, uh, the next meeting.
I will also, Mr. Chair, as per typical procedure, I'll do a findings of fact as well, that will include with, uh, with the order agenda.
Okay, just no questions or comments? Then I'll call a question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried, ordinances are approved. Thank you very much. I guess, uh, Brian, uh, now that, uh, you're going to be updating the, uh, the master list, okay, uh, Jim, you and Jay and I are going to need to, uh, set up a meeting with Brian, again, to, uh, to take another bite out of the apple, I think. So, uh, Brian, when you issue that, would you also, uh, make a proposed date as to, or dates, as to when you're going to be in town, so that we can, uh, move forward to the next review?
Absolutely.
Agreed, Jim?
Yep.
Okay. Good, then let's go to the chair's report, several items, uh, that I want to bring to your attention. Uh, the, uh, the officers, Jay, Anne, and I had a meeting with, a pre-application meeting with the Goseo Nature and Land Conservancy about, uh, three weeks ago, on some potential work that they were thinking about doing relative to, uh, some of their property, that they weren't certain as to, uh, zoning ordinance rules and standards, and, and, uh, what the process would be. Uh, when we talked about the, uh, the items that were actually proposed, and actually got down to brass tacks, it turns out that nothing they were proposing required planning commission review. So, entirely is, uh, within their discretion as the property owner to do the landscaping and, and things that they wanted to do. So, uh, that was the out, the simple output of about an hour and a half meeting. And hopefully, we helped, uh, the nature conservancy, you know, to, uh, be able to move forward. Uh, you didn't see budget information in your package tonight, uh, that was an oversight on my part, uh, you'll have it, you'll have it next time, and, uh, and, you know, the, the, the budget rolls as of the end of, uh, as of the meeting, the township meeting coming up, so, uh, there'll be a new budget that, uh, we'll have at the next floor round, and we'll see what it was that was finally approved for, for our particular, uh, line items to work from. So, uh, that will be coming. Um, I received a request from, uh, from Dale Wayne through Brian to, uh, to have the, uh, they were asking to have the kayak launch, uh, um, approval that we gave, the tentative approval, um, renewed. Uh, a site plan approval is only good for a year, okay, but the ordinance says that if the applicant wants to extend that, they have to come back to us prior to the one-year anniversary and request that we give them a six-month renewal. Uh, they have done so. Uh, I did not put it on the agenda tonight, uh, because, first of all, I wanted it listed as an agenda topic, and second, I ask, I've asked staff, uh, we had a long laundry list of things that were contingency items, not the least of which was the legal question that came up about whether in fact, uh, you know, it requires a township vote. And not knowing the answer to those questions one time is okay, not knowing the answer the second time it comes up is not okay. So, on that basis, I've asked Brian to get with Dale, and, uh, and when this comes up, we have all the contingency items that were laid out there, and those that we can answer, we answer, before this commission, so we can see what it is that was there, where it stands, uh, before we would move to potentially renew it. So, that'll be coming probably at the next meeting. Um, next is kind of a question. I've, I've been watching, uh, you know, the township board actions, right up to, to this issue of county property, um, you know, that they want to, uh, potentially vacate, and whether the, uh, you know, whether the township owns it or doesn't want it, and, and all this, and, you know, they, they worked on, uh, worked on the Parkway, uh, one, and approved that, accepted that, and they're working on the one on Stout, I believe? Is that it? Okay, now, and so, I, you know, I got to think it to myself, the process that, that the, the board is using, you know, when we sat back and thought about it, was the process we wanted them to do. You know, we sent them a motion and asked them to do this, hold a public hearing, you know, make communications with, uh, with the, uh, Wayne County, and make sure they're on board, so that nothing slides by and just kind of happens, without, without the board being aware of it, community being aware of it, and then making a decision to take or not take, as the first choice. The board's been doing that. So, you know, I've been, I've been talking with Brian every now and then, you know, uh, you know, to, to find out where we stand with, with asking all those legal questions we had. And it dawned on me, you know, if the board is already doing really what we want, do we really need to spend the time and money, of his time and, and the lawyer's time, to answer questions that in essence, the board is already, already addressing, on an individual case-by-case basis? I wanted to throw this out there, as to whether, as to whether, uh, we actually need to do any more in this. Or do we, or do we, uh, stop, okay, and, and just let, let the processes work, let the board know? That's a question. I don't, I'm not advocating one direction or the other. I simply don't want to spend money, you know, if, uh, if potentially, we already know the answer, and the answer lies in the township board. Outback opinions, please, what people think?
Well, the only thing I can think of is...
Your mic, Anne?
The only thing, uh, in my mind is that as long as Dale gives us advice upon, we have to do something, uh, that would, that would be the end of your concern.
Yes? Jim, what do you think?
Who's the original, um, subcommittee on this? And there was a subcommittee, right, that really...
Yeah, there was, and, and it was, it was, uh, Jody Wise, uh, Carlton was, was the lead on that, huh? And she was, she, she had pulled together, Steve, you were on it?
Yes.
Jay?
Jay.
Jay was on it too?
Yes.
Okay. And, and you, you guys came through with, uh, a couple of generations of, of thinking on it, as I recall, there was a first document, then you came through with a second document, and from that, then we brought to the board, or to the commission, then there were a whole bunch of questions people had, uh, legally, that, that we didn't have answers to.
Correct, so, you know, I think we were going at one pace, and we kept talking about the pace that the county was going to go at to really, uh, divest of these areas, was a much faster pace. And we saw that scene with Parkway, we saw that scene again with Stout, and I would personally anticipate seeing that again with many more that are still under Wayne County, they're just going to continue down this process. So, I think whatever pace we were doing as a subcommittee, we were doing as a planning commission, uh, probably does not need to take place anymore, because it's coming to the board, they're bringing it to a public forum, just as you saw with Stout, and the public is here, voicing their opinion, uh, providing their feedback. And, uh, you know, as, as you point out, that is working well.
Well, one, one of the things that, that we were talking about, though, the other aspect of it was, that we were saying, hey, look, maybe we ought to be proactive and actually go get stuff. In other words...
Correct.
Select, you know, and, and set, set to set up a process to evaluate. Uh, is that part needed, at this point? You remember that part? Where in essence, everything was going to be, you know, there were, what was it, half dozen, or eight or nine, uh, spots that, uh...
Yes, there's still, there's still about a half dozen that are still Wayne County, and, you know, in, in the interest of Goseo, it, it probably is worth considering, just if the board is, is on favor, and, you know, maybe having a public forum with the community, if they're in favor, going after the last remaining ones to keep those, uh, opportunities available for the township and for the, the residents, so they have some, some road and access. Because there is only a few left on the, uh, the rivers.
And if the board handled it with the same process that they're handling what they're, what they're doing now, then that would work. So I guess what I'm, I guess what I'm hearing is, is, uh, Brian, okay, correct me if I'm wrong, but what I'm hearing is, is that as far as us going to the township attorney with the laundry list of questions we had, uh, we don't need to do that. And that the board processes are working just fine, without, you know, essentially, we sent a recommendation to them to do what they're doing. We sent them a motion, say, hey, we think you ought to do this, and that's what they did. It's nice that they listened, I appreciate that.
Well, it's, it's now more than a motion, right? I mean, now it's a, it's basically a policy that has to be followed. So whatever Wayne County is going to vacate, it has to be discussed in an open public meeting by the township board. So it can't be, you know, it can't be just handled behind closed doors, it can't be, oh, we, you know, we didn't get the message, we didn't get the memo that, that Wayne County was vacating, so we just let the neighbors deal with it. So, the policy that we've, you know, basically forced the board to have, you know, literally they forced them, they accepted the policy, you know, as a board, but it basically forces, you know, any of these discussions to happen in an open public forum. So I'm happy with where it's at right now.
So you feel we need to do anything else?
Right now, I think it's going, as it should be going.
Okay.
And each, you know, each property can view it on its own merits.
All right, so on that basis, guys, unless anybody objects, Brian, cancel that list.
No problem.
We'll save some attorney's fees, and your time is short. We do have a tight budget this year, and this is just, you know, if we haven't answered to a question already, we don't ask the question. So that'll take care of that. Last item is the next meeting date. Brian, there's nothing in the hopper that I'm aware of.
Nope.
Okay, I would suggest that, is there any reason not to go all the way out to maybe June 4th? You know, that would give us time, Jim, to work at the subcommittee level on, you know, bringing out the next few ordinances.
Right.
And how do people look on June 4th? That's the first Monday in June.
Sounds good.
You guys all right with that? Okay, by the way, the, I think June is when we also have our officers' elections, so that'll be on the agenda. Officers' elections plus ordinance changes plus anything else that might be coming wrong that we need to talk about. Okay? All right, that completes the chair's report. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion, second part. Call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.